Officially have a quorum. So I will call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023 to order. We'll go around the room and everyone choose themselves.
Robert Davies, Altona.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Sherry Sandler, member.
Blair Haney, SRPC.
And Mr. Davies will be seated and voting tonight for, um, for Mr. Anderson. So pretty quick agenda tonight, our limited agenda, um, no cases for, so no true public hearings tonight. We have a few housekeeping items that we're gonna take care of. Are you here, are you the? The Como's? For, uh, so well, um, so I know you had some questions that you had sent in through email that we indicated that was probably easier to address through, um, through, you know, during, during a board meeting. And I did have response just today from, with interaction with town council regarding the conditions, um, which we can go over tonight to make sure where we're at with those. And, um, I believe we're at a point now that we are okay to sign the, uh, the plans based on the last item on the, on the condition. But you can come on up if you, if you wanna have a discussion with us.
Anthony Como. And the applicant representing Robin Como.
Sir, I'm just, I'm reading that email that you forwarded to me.
So basically, we, we, we had some plans delivered and, um, at the last meeting, we didn't sign them because there was a question raised by the board, me particularly, whether or not the conditions were precedent, meaning did, did they have to be met before we signed a plan or subsequent? Subsequent means we sign it, but there's a deadline on it and, and it has to be met by that deadline. The, the last condition on, on there is what kinda, when I had more time to look at it and discuss with council, swayed me more to be that it's okay to have it as a subsequent, meaning these are conditions that we can, as long as everything has been met on there, we can sign off. There's still gonna be deadlines and things that you'll be held to, but at least we'll let you get the plan signed and recorded with the registry.
Okay.
So did you, did you have any questions you wanted us to go over?
Well, yeah, just basically, um, let's see, so at the last planning board meeting on the 25th, um, the road management easement deed did not need to be approved and signed by them in order for the planning board to sign the Mylar copy. So why was that advice disregarded?
It, it wasn't that, so we didn't, in, in the email to us, it was indicated that the board selectmen had indicated to us something which hadn't occurred. So the, the easement acceptance by the board selectmen, that's separate from us. We can't accept land at, at this board level. We can, as a best practice, we can request or require applicants to potentially offer an easement or set back a lot line so that on roads that are, that don't have true right-of-way, to potentially allow that for the future. So that, that wasn't the, that wasn't the reason that we didn't, um, sign it that night. It was, it was more the dates, for me, it was specifically the conditions.
Regarding the.
Regarding the restoration part of it. So there was two items. Apologize, I'm just getting back into the, uh.
In regards to the road management easement.
Yep.
That's something that we would, we would really like to get pulled off of the conditions.
Well, the, the offer to the town of an easement is, is, that process is separate from us. So I know that process in the works with the select board. And then they've got, you know, town council that's reviewed and probably provided feedback to, as to what, so the goal of that easement was to allow for potential for the, if the town ever needed to in the future expand the road.
Correct.
Or the right-of-way, meaning, you know, it may not be that the road would go within that, but the, it might get expanded a little bit and then the shoulder widening and everything else. That's the goal of, of, of those easements.
Yeah, I understand the, the logic behind it, but it's just a, uh, I mean, it's a scenic road. If we cut into that area, we're gonna be removing the three trees at the frontage of the property, if the, if the town ever needs to do anything. Why is it that we need to provide this, but a subdivision quarter mile down the road on a skinnier section of road has no requirements of that?
So they did. I look back at that, at that subdivision, that, so the subdivision you're questioning was the foul zone, um, the seven lot Stevens Hill.
Right.
So if you look at the plan, there's a shaded area, so they set their lot lines back. So they didn't do necessarily an easement, but they're defining the front, they're, they're defining their lot lines further back from the road. So there was, there's a hashed out section of that plan.
It's essentially an alternative. So there's the option of, um, in your case, the, the lot line was carried and the, I think the, just on the plan, it's shown as an easement area. So you still retain the property and then there's an easement over it for X number of feet along that frontage. The alternative is, and this is what that application did, is it, it kinda worked out uniquely on that case that the records of the, that lot were kind of unclear. There were some notes on the plans that there really weren't any good deed descriptions. There's stone walls and that was about it there. But what they did is, you know, by surveying standards, you would often hold that stone wall. Well, they actually said, well, we don't really know where the property line is definitively, is they just held a property line further back than maybe what they could have based on the stone walls. So instead of giving them retaining land and then having an easement over it, they just pulled their land back and said, I don't care, you know, between that line and the dirt road. I don't care what it is. And they, they kind of placed that line, they approximated the center line, obviously Stevens Hill, it's hard to find a center line. Then they did 25 feet off of that, cause that's that, that they're half of a 50-foot right-of-way. It doesn't always work out that, this one it worked out because they had to really define what they thought the property line was anyway, based on deeds. Usually it's the easement route. We've seen a couple where they give small triangular easements to like round out a corner. That's happened on Smoke Street before. So there's, there's two ways to do it. In the end, I mean, it's, it's just so that the town has that, cause the provisions of the subdivision ordinance require the 50-foot right-of-way for the town.
Right, so I guess my.
Lots of not provided, but.
My question to that is, okay, so you do that, what are you gonna do about the cemetery right there? What's the point of doing a?
So it's not saying that at, at this point, anything will happen. It's just saying that in the future, again, it allows the town some purview to, if they ever do improvements upon that road. And again, nothing is, nothing is planned, it, it, but it's giving the town the ability to, down the line, as population grows, everything else, um, that they, they would be able to, to potentially widen sections or straighten them out or make, you know, make them better. But that's why it's also, it's, it's not, um, you know, if the road is say 20 feet, it's not, well, 30 feet on this side, it's saying, okay, try to establish a center line and then it's the 25 feet from that for this side and then, you know, it'd be 25 on the other side, knowing that instructions, sections of that, there's not gonna be 25 feet on the other side either, cause there's a house already there.
And I guess it's from a practical standpoint, you're right, the chances of the town coming in and saying, hey, we're gonna come in here and really clean up a 50-foot swath is unlikely, but every application that we get, we have to apply that. The ordinance requires the 50 feet, so it, we haven't really had a sub, unless we've had a subdivision application where they exceed the 25 feet or meet the 25 feet from a center line, then we haven't required the easement or what happened down at Fowl's Owns. So it's more so, we have to apply the same review standard to every application. But you're right, they're, unless they're gonna go through the effort of relocating a cemetery, realistically, nothing's going to happen, but we have to apply the same conditions to every application that comes through. So, um, and I think there was, I know some, I think you said that there was the feedback from the town council and comments on the language and it's mostly just the ability, realistically, they're only gonna be able to ditch within that area. It's what, one, one and a half car lengths width wide, if you're lucky. Your tires are in the ditch at that point, but, um, it's more so just trying to be consistent across every application that we get in, trying to apply that same.
Would there be any way to add wordage to that in regards to not, not removing the, the trees that have been there forever? That's the frontage, that's part of the property, like that's.
Um, unlikely, cause, so, well, you have, the scenic, the scenic road is gonna be helpful in protecting that. I don't see the town going through, in current practice anyway, just removing trees willy-nilly. You know, I don't see them just going out and, and expanding roads and taking out trees and things like that just to do so.
And they have to follow the scenic road requirements too, so there'd actually be a public hearing before they could do that?
Right, they would normally post a public hearing saying that their improvements, you know, small brush, no. Larger things, so like, uh, we get it from New Hampshire Electric Co-op and EverSource when they, when they're dealing with scenic roads and they're doing tree trimming, they hold a public hearing here, um, they identify the trees that they're gonna remove and they, and they, and they say why, so.
And do we have recourse for their decision? Like what is that, what is that, cause?
Would it, like if the town came forward and said?
Yeah, they decide to, like how, how do we appeal something like that? Is there, is there an appeal process for it?
You would get, they would get notified actually, it's a, so if, because it's a public hearing, you would get notified.
Seen it road, public hearing.
Because you wouldn't be a.
But is there any way to appeal if they decide to do it? Is there any way to appeal that?
Yeah, just like a normal planning board decision, because it would, they would require the, a vote from this board to allow that. And that would fall under the standard course of appeal action. So if you're not at the meeting, um, you would be able to, uh, I think it's 30 days, you can file an appeal.
Yeah.
Like, like any planning board application.
Yeah, and I don't wanna speak for like the road agent or the select board or, or anything as to, you know, what they may or may not do. But in general, they've got enough things on their docket, um, so unless there's a specific condition in a specific road, that's like, uh, like say there was a tree there currently that was a problem, you know? So if there was a tree there, it's gonna be a problem for, um, even the driveway to go in, you know? The building inspector or the road agent can require that to be removed as part of the driveway permit process. But unless there's a, a hazard identified or there's some other reason to, to do work on that road, like, you know, ponding on the road or something like that, and they're trying to improve drainage, um, that's been an issue or something.
You got scenic road on your side.
Yeah, the scenic road is helpful. It doesn't provide everything.
We got Susan Mooney on this board, she wouldn't have a tree cut down if she could.
I appreciate that, but I, I figured scenic road would help me before in this situation and it has not, neither has prime farmland soils, which is disregarded in this aspect, but.
I think it's one of those things where there would need to be a lot of, in order for them to really improve this section of road, somebody would have to have very good reason, which doesn't exist now, as to why the, that section of road needs to be improved. And I think we've all seen that it wouldn't just be that section of Stevens Hill, it would be multiple sections and.
A majority.
I think we, we've seen based on, um, past actions is, I don't think people would wanna spend that kinda money, especially because it's a scenic road. That's a hell of an endeavor.
I think they've been trying to get it paved for 25 plus years and.
There's other roads that we.
And they shouldn't.
There's other roads that they've been trying to get paved that probably should be paved and can be paved, but it's hard enough to get those paved. But yeah, I hear you, it's, it's never say never, but.
Protect ourselves and protect the property, protect the land.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, one's a cedar tree, the other old maples. They've been there for a hundred years and just something we don't wanna see go.
And legally, like I think you said, I think if you carry the projection of the cemetery wall along the road, that projection is pretty much level with, I think, your front lot line, right? So then in theory, that easement comes in legally, the endeavor to move that cemetery, I, I think that's, that's going to the state level, which I don't think anybody wants to move a cemetery.
There's a lot of cost.
Yeah.
There's a lot of cost involved. I haven't seen the town try to move a cemetery ever.
It's also important to note that if, if, if for some reason they want to improve this road to be 22 foot wide so that you could pass two cars, currently you can't pass two cars right there, and it's just been that way for a long time. The, you know, similar to this, like where we're trying to apply the same conditions to every application, you know, they'll have this little sliver on your property, they have so many other pieces of property that they can't just go and do it. The town would actually have to engage a surveyor, engage an engineer, and for each lot, try and get a similar easement. So it's, there's so many hurdles here, but it's, the, the practice has always been to, as the applications come in, the idea is 50 years from now, the town might have a clear 50-foot where they can maintain ditches and stuff like that.
Yeah, there was a similar.
It's probably gonna be longer than that.
There's a similar situation at the beginning of Stevens Hill, um, in the last year, within the last year, so. And part of that, so some of what you see there was what just the applicant was doing, you know, to get the driveways in, but there's similar, um, where they provide either an easement or establish a lot line to allow for, for some.
They moved the stone wall.
Things, cause that section was fairly narrow too and, and a problem. So I think the applicant moved the stone wall back a bit and, and cleaned up some trees to improve a sightline there, so. But the same thing for that section was applied, um, with either an easement to the town or a, uh, you know, them moving back the, the lot line.
That one was an easement, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we do try to be consistent on the board. Does that mean we're always perfect at it? No, um, but every case is a bit different, so from the outside, it may look like a different set of rules, but, um, a lot of, there's a lot of discussions that go back and forth during subdivisions and, and bigger cases that come up with alternative resolutions or, you know, like, like Mr. McKinnon explained, you know, the seven easement, they did this with their lot line. And we're seeing that quite a bit on the, uh, the newly adopted like lake roads where they're, they're establishing the road, so there isn't really a great, so they're saying, okay, well, we're gonna put our lot line here, that establishes the road and they provide the, you know, the distance for the right-of-way.
Right.
So just to close the loop on this, I think from what I've seen is we've kind of gotten the opinion that we're good in terms of precedent or subsequent conditions, so we're good. Your outstanding issues from last meeting have kind of been addressed at this point.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't have this last condition on here, the dead, so this last condition is kind of what allows me to consider it, that these are conditions subsequent, you know, for most of them anyway. That last, that last button, if that last bullet wasn't there, especially the wetland restoration must be, could be by per NHDES requirements, that would've, that would've come out to me as being a condition precedent, meaning it had to be done, had to be met before we could sign. So, and I'm saying precedent subsequent, it, it's, it just means before or after for us is to, are the conditions that had to be met before we sign or after we sign. This last button is what makes it that the, the rest of these can be done after we sign. So that allows you to get the Mylar signed, recorded with the registry and, uh, you know, and continue moving, moving forward. So I, and I don't have the, the email right in front of me, I'm sorry. Were there, were there any other questions in there that we didn't clarify for you?
No, nothing that really, nothing that's really pertaining, um, nothing too important.
Okay.
It was mainly about the, the question about the, the easement.
Yeah.
And then obviously the question about the planning board, the copy, the signing from last meeting.
Sure. And, and Mr. Haney, I think you provided a review and I know, um, our Land Use Clerk had looked through, um, some of these, so obviously like the driveway permit, that's gonna be something after we sign, you'd be working with the road agent for that. Some of these others have been met, they'll be on the plan, um, so. So yeah, I think we can go ahead and get that signed for you tonight.
Absolutely.
We have everything right tonight? The plans and the Mylar? Yeah.
Yep, we have, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, are you guys taking it or are you gonna record it? Are you guys gonna take it to the registry or?
Uh, no, I don't.
You guys figure that. So are you?
Get checked, sorry.
Okay, so we'll do it? Okay.
Okay.
All right. No, I was, I was just gonna say, if you guys were gonna take it, we could sign it now if you, before you leave, but if we're gonna take it, we'll just sign it after the meeting and Alana will take care of it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think there was one question, the Mylar didn't have the wetland scientist stamp, but the, um, the paper copies do, and that's, so, and generally when we say we want the stamps on, on everything, so it's a surveyor and the, this isn't for you, it's more for your surveyor and wetland scientist, um, we like professional stamps on, on, on the Mylar too.
Which I talked.
It goes up to the, so when the, that helps for anybody that looks up a deed or a plan on the registry, they're gonna see the Mylar version, not what's recorded here. So it's okay, we have the, the engineers, the surveyor's stamp.
The registry's okay.
That's what the register will, will require.
All right. Same surveyor did it, his property, and he didn't do the, the stamp on that. He went back.
Registry doesn't require it, it's more so the town level, so it's, people like to have the consistency, but yeah, the registry doesn't require it, um, for a legal boundary, yeah, which is what they care about. So, okay.
I mean, that's.
Perfect.
That's it for me.
All right, well, uh, yeah, we'll sign it once we, uh, before we leave tonight. Alana won't let us leave before we, before we sign.
Please don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it. We have another Mylar to sign tonight before we leave as well. That's for 22-017-SUB Deerfield Road Furnell. We have the Mylar plans tonight for that one. We've already had the deed language or HOA or covenants, whatever it was, reviewed by town council. Some changes were made and approved and, and, um, so that, so we're good to go on that one as well. So let's go back to our items on our agenda and, and I'll keep this quick tonight. Everybody, I forgot, tonight was a deliberative session for the school, which is where some of the members are, others are sick. So approve, review, approve site plan subdivision applications. We did approve those, uh, the new ones in September, September 28th. So we're good as long as they're on the website correctly and, and everything else. What we need to do is update our subdivision and site plan regulations to now line up with the applications, cause right now, now we require fewer plans on the apps than we do in our regs. So it's kind of at our purview as, as we get new stuff. So that's kind of what I was, when I say that is, I think we have a number of items that we're gonna be following up on for subdivision and site plan, uh, regulations to potentially amend this year, probably within, probably, my guess is after town meeting to see what happens with the, the warrant articles. And try to do it all clean in one shot would be my, my guess, or my goal. And that's just one of those items that we'll, we'll take care of then. Is there any other conversation or questions on that? Uh, reevaluate conditional use permit application to shorten it. I think, Mr. McKinnon, were you working on that one? I feel like you brought that up or?
Um, yeah, I need to, it was mentioned a couple times, I think. I would need to probably do a draft of that. I think I, I think it's the town of Barrington. Essentially what they do is, so our, our conditional use application has a lot of different places where you can put your information on the, the application. And if you look, you know, uh, essentially we have different sections that you would complete depending on which type of conditional use permit. So you might have a bunch of blank sections if it's not part of, you know, cause it'll be like a subsection A and then you fill in for open space, or there's a subsection B and that's the wetland stuff. It could probably be shortened to the point where, and, you know, I see this in the professional world a lot, it's actually a lot easier for applicants usually to fill out like a one-sheet or two-sheet application, sign property information, applicant information, but then you can bullet point and request, it's easier to type up a memo and you can say, address these as, um, you know, whether it's handwritten, typed, um, on letterhead. And it would just probably potentially simplify, cause I, I think, you know, I've noticed the last couple of conditional uses, it does get a little bit confusing as, if somebody does fill out the actual application itself, it can get a little bit confusing as to like try and read through, they're trying to cram it on four lines. So I think I'd like to look at if there's a way we could shorten the actual document. And that might be as simple as, um, I think our text size could probably be reduced. I think the text size is bigger than 12 in some areas and just not providing sections for responses on the application itself. You could probably go for our one, two, three, four, five pages? So five pages for kind of the bulk of the application, maybe down to like two, especially if we remove, and, and just say a separate document to be provided in response to. What that'll do for us too is currently we have section A and section B. And section. Section A, I think is more so. Is that the open space? Doesn't really explicitly say. I think that's the, uh.
Right.
Open space one ray and section, section B of the application is regarding like wetlands impacts. That'll be important too, because one of our proposals is that we're adding the wetland vegetated buffer, which is, you can pull a conditional use permit, so there's gonna be overlaps there, um, but it would just be good to simplify the document. I can tell you, probably make applicants feel better if they could even just type up a Word document with bullet points addressing, as long as they address the bullet points, then, you know, that's a, you know, make it easier for everybody to read in the end.
Yeah. Do you have an example?
Yeah, so let me, uh, I wanna say it's Barrington, but it could be, it's a town that I've seen recently, so I will pull that and I can, uh, send it around. I think there's some reformatting that could even, I mean, we could reduce text size on this and probably kill a page and then.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I think I, I love your idea about getting rid of the amount of space for them to fill out.
Yeah.
Because they should be typing it anyways, right?
Yeah.
It should be submitted, you know, digitally, so we have it for files and circulation purposes. And do we accept conditional use permits for different, different things? Like you're saying, some things are applicable, some things are not, like should we break it out?
What do you mean?
Well, if you're doing it for this reason, give us these bullets.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
No, yes, so within the, within the zoning ordinance, anywhere we say that, well, I think I'm answering your question. So I wanna back up, so the conditional use permit, we realized when we added another conditional use permit process in zoning, we realized we don't even have, we didn't have an application for it. So we, we had an open space all this whole time, but we needed a permit, application for it. So when we added the, um, the wetlands piece of it, uh, to avoid things going for variances and to allow a conditional use permit for that, that's when we also adopted this, which this came from another, majority of this came from another town. I like the idea of a narrative, I think we've talked about that before. So adding verbiage saying, you know, in lieu of this form, you know, fill out the front page and then attach a narrative that should address all these items is, is welcome. And if they don't address those items, they run the risk of not providing enough information to have the conditional use permit denied. But within the zoning ordinance, we list out, at least for like the wetlands, um, the wetlands impact, we list out the criteria, you know, for that. I think that's what you're talking about was, you know, a conditional use permit may be granted for these, you know, four or five, you know, scenarios, it has to meet these five items. Is that what you were? Yeah. So my, by my understanding, we have three, open space, wetlands, and now the aquifer protection. Well, presumably this would pass.
Yeah.
The new one will pass and then we, didn't we put a provision in there for a conditional use permit?
I believe so. I'd have to go back and reread.
Cause I think we, we routed it instead of going, sending it to the, to the Board of Appeals. I forget what it was for, I'm drawing a blank on it now, we could find it pretty quickly, but. So that's at least three different, like, I guess you could say subcategories of the larger conditional use permit.
Yes, there's a conditional use permit and then the aquifer. So, yes.
So, so. So it's at least three.
There's two separate ones in the wetlands. So, well, one's proposed right now is a, is an, or, or a vegetated buffer. So if that goes through, there'll be two in the wetlands, uh, one aquifer and then one in the open spaces. So.
Since it's four.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
Yeah, that could actually like really clarify things in meetings, a lot easier for everybody.
Yeah.
Doing it this way that Ian's talking about.
I think I'll pull, it is Barrington I was thinking of, they have a three pager where the first page is really just project information. The difference is they just have one numbered section for responses and it, but I think what they do that's a little different is they take some of our things and kind of simplify it even more, probably with the idea being that it would apply to multiple. I had to double check with Barrington, see what they do require conditionally, I'll just word search their ordinance to see what items require it. Yeah, so that's, that's it right there, yeah.
So that'll be it. Take a look at that, I've got some notes, so I know, so if you wanna send over to me and, to take a look at?
There's a, there's definitely another town I'm missing that I'm thinking of that I did work in recently, so I'll pull, and we, we kind of used this as a starting point. I know we pulled some from Stratum. So even ours, I think, could probably just, I like, you know, for example, how our first,[1781.48] how our first, our cover sheet is formatted. But we could probably maybe use just two more sheets and we'll find a way to fit everything else on there. So I will start pulling that together. I'll try and get something, I'll pull a bunch of PDFs together and I'll send it around.
All right, that sounds good, sweet. All right, appreciate it. Is there any other discussion on that? So again, the goal here is to streamline what applicants have to fill out, what town staff has to look at, and what we have to review ultimately and approve or disapprove. Fee schedule, so we can recommend changes in fees to the select board. The select board adopts the fees, we don't control those. I think us taking a look at it from time to time and reminding them, you know, what's in line, what's not in line with other towns is probably good. I look at the recording fee being, like, where the town is losing money on that, because we charge the fee for the registry, the $75, I think, but we don't charge for mileage, staff time, or anything else.
We just build that into a budget and then covers it.
Right, so the town, the town ultimately pays for the time it takes to get to the registry, record it, and everything else. So that's one where I would look at, us recommending to the select board a change or an increase. You know what that also does is, kind of encourages applicants to file it themselves if they want, which then frees up staff time to focus on anything else that's project related or...
This always seems like something that gets batted around. Is it a town policy that we do it? Or is it just past practice we continue to do?
It's been past practice. So we've been trying to put, well, for a little, recently, before Alana came on board, we started pushing back. Obviously, the limitation in hours of the land use clerk position office was part of a limiting factor, so some of your, some applicants just want to get it signed and get it out as soon as they possibly can without relying on us to do it. So I don't know if it's a service we have to offer, or if...
I, my understanding, and I'm drawing this from other communities, is that just keeping track of verifying that they did in fact record it, right? Particularly things like conditions, you know, because then it's, you know, it's part of the plan that has, or, you know, anything that might have conditions on it or something to that effect. Just sort of memorialize that.
Right, like, they need to provide either copy or information as to what the recording information is.
And you got to chase that down. Probably a lot easier to do than what you're doing now, which is getting into your car and going out to the realm, but...
I think that's why...
It would just be like, you'd probably have to have some kind of spreadsheet or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely, I was something, Kevin did say he encouraged people or would try to get people to go. I liked going the first few times because it, to me, it kind of wraps it up and I'm a little bit more in control of like, you know, knowing the number and filing it correctly, and, but I, I do see that it does take a little time and I am going to be looking at the number of hours per week, so I'll get it.
And also, you haven't had one rejected yet, right?
No.
And that's another thing. So like, you can get plans rejected pretty easily from, especially busier plans can be, then like, they have, you don't, you lose the money, you get to cut another check for the registry, because they might, they sometimes catch that like after you submit, and then it doesn't matter if you file your plan, give them a check, and they deny it before scanning it. You have to give them another $25, very strict. And it seems like every year they find new things to really nitpick on the plan. So that's a benefit of, if you have the applicant do it, it's, they handle it. If it is rejected, well, that's on you, you didn't wait, or them, you didn't waste the time going to do it, so.
I think it's a great thing to do. Just like I said, I know some communities require the town staff, it's like the town policy. So it's not that, it doesn't the case, we can do it, yeah.
Well, I like that, especially with some of these now where we're getting HOAs and covenants and things like that. And if there's covenants involved, we want those recorded with the registry separately as well, so that there's a record.
Right, it runs with the land, yeah.
It runs with the land. So that's one of those things where if we're recording it, they give us the Mylar, but they don't give us the covenants, we say, well, we're not recording this, so you can bring us that other part, whereas they go do it, you know, they don't file the second part, record it. I just want to make sure that the town is compensated.
What about with Dairy Field and the abutting tenants, the abutting people that live on that subdivision that they're having a meeting on tonight?
Oh, yeah, well, that's a good, that's not on here, that came in today, so...
What was it?
Well, I'll bring that up in a second, we'll finish.
Do you want me to finish talking about fee schedule?
We will. So what was brought up is, we received notice of, as in a butter, to, to a subdivision that's being proposed, that's being heard in Deerfield tonight. So we just got the notice today, there's no plans with it or anything else, so...
We got the notice last week.
Okay.
And my question is, because it's another town, do they have to notify? They notify us, and it's our responsibility to notify the butters?
No. No, no, so, so we'll take a pause on the fee schedule for a second. So we'll bring this up. So we received notice from, from the town of Deerfield regarding a subdivision that they were hearing tonight. It was the first public hearing for it. So it was on Deerfield Road?
No, it's on Nottingham, Nottingham Road.
Nottingham Road, I'm sorry, Nottingham Road in Deerfield.
And they're having it tonight, and it said in the letter that if it passes through the board tonight, then they're just going to have a hearing tonight and pass it. And I think that's awfully unfair to Nottingham residents who are abutting that property.
So a butters, a butters of the property
Do get noticed.
Get legal notice from, during the application process, separate from this.
From their town.
From Deerfield.
If they're, if they're defined as an abutter under the RSA, which is in, unless a town requires more, you're, if they're direct abutters, even in the town Nottingham, like, say, I guess is the property right on the town line or something? If whoever owns the land right next to it in Nottingham is considered a direct abutter?
They would get a notice from Deerfield.
Even though it's a different town, they do get noticed? Because they, they qualify as a direct abutter. But yes, like, somebody two doors down, that doesn't meet the definition of an abutter, just like similar to here, even here in town, if you don't meet the definition of an abutter, which I think we still do direct, sometimes do 300 feet, something like that, but...
Would that be our responsibility?
No.
Is that why they're notifying us, so that we have time to notify our residents?
Some towns require abutting towns to get certain notifications.
So under the RSA?
General.
Yeah, usually under the RSA, when, when there's an application that's, that's involving a parcel that's on a town line, that affords abutter status to the town, so the town gets notified. So that means the planning board is usually the board that will have comment, but the select board, other boards can weigh in as well and provide comment to that board.
But nobody's required to let these people know.
No, they are, true abutters, true abutters.
But the ones that are 500 feet, no, they're not required.
Just like in our town.
Similar to, say, like, if somebody, if they were in the middle of Nottingham, same thing. It's like, word of mouth usually is what spreads out from the direct abutters. But that's not to say that tonight, the board of, the Deerfield Planning Board might vote for depart, what, regional impact. They could vote that, and then it, then it kickstarts. We get formal notification or asked to provide comments, so like, that's a whole different thing, but...
Or they just may accept, it's possible they accept the application's complete tonight, and then they start listening to it and they continue it to another night. I'm hoping that, without knowing anything more on it, that's the, if you can see the screen, that's it right there. So it's a 66 acre parcel with a 50 foot neck, thereabouts. The applicant apparently owns that other parcel in front of it as well. I don't know what the plan is.
Didn't we get a parcel?
I feel like this parcel also has land that would be landlocked in Nottingham.
We had an application for it.
So I feel like we saw it before, a few times, as designer reviews.
They want to do like a three, a dead end row with three lots, because that's the requirement, is you have to do three lots, three homes. But then they wanted to do the land in Nottingham.
But the road would be a private road coming through Deerfield.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be...
So it was, so the board, you know, had a number of comments to the applicant on that. I believe it's the same applicant. So, but without seeing the plan, their plans aren't online, as far as I could tell, so I've not seen any plan for it, I don't know, other than it's a three lot major subdivision for Deerfield.
Sounds similar to what they wanted to do before, but they wouldn't be utilizing the Nottingham land for the new house or something like that.
So I don't know what the plan is there, so...
So what is the purpose in notifying us if we're not to do anything?
It's to allow us to provide comment, but they're, based on the time that they sent it out and when we got it.
Have to call them now.
It's, and the fact that there was no plan set.
What did you say the big purpose of it?
For us to, to provide comment as a butters. So usually this board would, would look at it as, you know, we would provide comment based on if it was a subdivision in our town. It's similar to like the, a little bit different than the developments of regional impact that we just provided comment to Raymond for. So it allows us an opportunity to make sure that we have a chance to provide input.
I should have sent it out Friday, like, right when I got it, and I didn't.
Well, it's tough that they didn't send any kind of plans with it or anything.
I thought, I think, and we were talking earlier, when you look at it, it's kind of the wording, it makes it seem like the application is, was going to be due today, so I must have stopped reading the sentence there, and not just that they're having a meeting on Tuesday.
Sure.
Which is weird to me.
So we can reach out to their planner or their department to see if they, A, what happened with it tonight, and then if it's still, if it's continued or anything else, and we have a chance to comment before our next meeting or before their next meeting.
Well, how are they, is it, is it different from town to town? Because if we have a hearing here, then we don't notify, we notify people after the hearing in order for them to come to it, you know?
It depends on what it is, so...
Because it seems to the wording was that they're going to have it, and then they're going to approve it right away.
So something like this, when it was being, if this was being proposed on the Nottingham side of it, Deerfield would have been notified it's an abutter as well, so that they would have had that, that kind of note, that timeline on it, separate from the board. When we require a board, a town be notified, it's usually through a development of regional impact designation. So that's only once we're, we've accepted the application or we've seen the application at a public hearing.
My main, my main concern was the people who are surrounding that and abutting that property, that they had notice in a fair hearing, a fair notice to go to the hearing.
Sure.
So that wasn't our responsibility, because if it was, we obviously didn't do it.
Yeah, so the definition of an abutter, so any of the lots directly next to it, across from it, on both sides, should have received legal notice. And that's on, that's between, that's, ultimately, it's up to the applicant to identify and notice as part of the application. Basically, it's not the board's, we tend to look at it, there are lists.
And if they don't properly notice, then it's actually, it makes the application like fully appealable and the decision, if there's a decision made, it's void. I would be surprised though if, I haven't rather noticed, but they might have said, did they, did the notice say something along the lines of the application will be reviewed tonight and that maybe action will be taken?
No, it sounded pretty good.
Yes.
Right, because sometimes what they'll do is, they, they wouldn't say, we are going to vote on it, but what they'll say is, they can, because some, if they, well, I guess if the board says, just like, we can vote and, we can accept and vote on an application in one meeting. By practice, we rarely do that unless it's a small application.
It says here that you're notified, Galant will make, make an application for a public hearing to consider approval of a major subdivision.
Yeah, so that's basically just saying they could seek a vote on it. It's kind of just a fancy way of saying that the application will be heard for the first time, I guess.
Yeah, it says, I mean, it does say here, the formal application will be submitted to the board on today. Board will consider acceptance, and if accepted, will hold a public hearing at that time.
At that time.
Right, so that's what we do too, we accept the application, then we open the public hearing, but you don't have to take a vote then. Not to say they won't, they have the right to, it's up to the board, I guess.
They do have a town planner, but they don't have an email on here. I hope that I can find it somewhere, and I can...
Would you be comfortable reaching out to them for us tomorrow and...
I'll do it now while, while we're talking.
I'd be curious to see plans.
I just can't find an email. Sorry, what?
I would just be curious, yeah, to see the plans, because, especially in this case where we had seen a design review sketch on a project that utilized both Nottingham and Deerfield land, and now it's just, interested to see how they...
I think there's one Nottingham abutter listed, but you can, like, there's G and S now.
Yeah, it's probably the people with the frontage on Deerfield Road.
Sorry, I always say Deerfield Road, because on our side it's Deerfield, on their side it's...
Yeah, it flips.
Yeah, but it's a P O box, so that doesn't really prove anything.
Yeah, that's, you don't always see the, you'd see the tax map.
That's the Deerfield town map, tax maps, that, you know, if we pulled up the Nottingham, you would see this, the parcel
To the right.
As land to the right to Nottingham, and obviously then there'd be other butters. So technically, I think, you know, that that, most likely, they probably would have had to notify the butters on the Nottingham side as well.
Basically, it depends on if they consider that small corner.
So we'll reach out to the Deerfield Planning Board to try to get some more information, try to get a copy of the plan, so we can actually provide meaningful input. Depending on if they continued the case or not, accepted the application first, I guess, and then if they continue the case, depending on what that deadline is, we'll, it'll either be myself providing some comment back, or if there's additional time, then we will, you know, go over it during the planning board meeting to, to provide additional comment from the whole board, which would then be, go through me to the...
Do you want to close out the fee thing? So, I know this is on here, is, I had done, I know I think I had sent it around, is I did like a comparison Excel chart that did show, let's see, I had, put our fees for subdivision site plan, basically every fee that we do for the planning board. And then I compared them to Dover, Durham, Epping, Northwood, and Rochester. In some cases, we do our fees, you know, we kind of do fixed fees in most cases. What I see a lot is that you'll actually have, like, for example, site plan is probably the one where there's the most discrepancy. We charge, I think, $750, my Excel file was adding random ones to things, but... $750 for a site plan of three acres or less, or $1,000 for a site plan of three acres or more, or more than three acres. A lot of, pretty much every other town that I listed, does their site plan, commercial site plans, based on a fee per square foot or fee per ratio of 1,000 square feet. Sometimes, for example, the, the one that, a lot of them do like 300 base fee, and that's 50,000, or $50 per thousand square feet. So if it's a 20,000 square foot building, that's, what, a thousand bucks? Yeah, so usually you get higher fees there. The idea is that those, the larger the site plan, the more staff time it takes to review office materials, if Alana's preparing stuff for her binder, stuff like that. So we're actually higher in terms of some of our subdivision fees. The only difference is Durham and Rochester charge a higher base fee for if it's a subdivision with a new road. I mean, realistically, we probably are going to see some subdivisions with new roads in the future, but, you know, is the extra, is going through the effort of getting an extra $400 on the base fee worth it? We're currently at $200 base fee plus $200 per lot. Some places are $600, Durham, like, for example, Durham is $600 for a subdivision with new road, and then $100 per lot. So I'm sure it's, it's all ratioed out, so I don't really see a need to change our subdivision. I think the one that I did want to consider was, do we amend our site plan one to be more, pretty much in line with everybody else? We charge a base fee and we're kind of hand, you know, hogtied at that point if it becomes complicated.
I, I think what I would recommend is that we, that I send that, as well as some comments to the select board. They can review it and see how we compare to surrounding towns and decide what they decide. Again, for me, the big one would be, if we're doing the recording at the registry, just to make sure that we're capturing the true cost of that for the town. You know, not trying to make money on it, but we shouldn't be losing money as a town on it.
Well, and I think it's important to see that, you know, you, as we've seen, the budgets are getting tighter and tighter every year. And a lot of times, the planning board's one of the few things, departments in town, that we can try and be self-sufficient, and it's the burden on the applicant, because it's, it's part of the, the cost of doing business and developing. And an extra $100 on a site plan for a 10 lot subdivision is probably, you know, it's pretty miniscule in terms of the margins.
Yeah, the other area I think we can save, not save money on, but be better about is, we have the option to require a third party review, and we've done it for more complex plans in the past. That's, cost is borne by the applicant, so not trying to inflate costs for people unnecessarily. But again, we're limited, you know, by our... But again, we're limited, you know, by our contracts with SRPC for, for planning purposes. We're maxing that out every year in the land use clerk sign as well. So it's saying, okay, if we get a certain size subdivision complex with drainage structures, things like that. We can send that out to a contract engineering firm to review based on our, our things to give us, you know. I think that could also potentially make it easier for the applicants in the long run too with how much back and forth there is if, if we get a concise list.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I, I see towns that they're, if you have a, if you have a subdivision that requires a drainage analysis or a site plan that requires drainage analysis, it is immediately going to third party review, so. We, I think we usually do that if that's the case, but, yeah, so I'd recommend maybe we, I'll forward this, I'll make sure you have the current one and.
Appreciate it.
I'll say that we maybe just suggest that they look at amending how we do site plan fees. And also consider a conditional use fee, because a lot of towns do, again, you want to discourage conditional use because it's kind of like getting a variance. But again, it's, it's more paperwork and stuff, so it's pretty small, I think most towns I saw, it's a hundred bucks.
So three areas, site plan, conditional use and recording fees specifically that we think they should take a look at, okay. Any other questions, comments on the fee schedule? Processes, procedures, Alana, no. So we'll, we'll get to that another day, that was up and on here when I thought the agenda was very, very light and we might have time to get to it. Basically, when there was a vacancy in the land use clerk position, quickly realized between, and then vacancy in the town administrator position. I quickly realized we don't have things drafted out so that someone could come in and be, could sit down and feel comfortable doing that, that position. Then now Alana's in there, she gets to learn and help create some of that, so it's really just a goal of us understanding the whole process from. Application coming in, how it's reviewed, process handled, the questions that Land Use Clerk fields, gets to us. How it goes from, and who's responsible for it, so that if there's a hole in any one of those spots, we can jump in and make sure that it's taken care of without a, a drop off in the service to the applicant, to the town or the, or the board. So, and that'll incorporate feedback from the building inspector and others as well, so.
Imagine that'll be a fluid document for a while as we kind of get a couple of.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not meant to be like crazy long, it's just made more of like a step-by-step, quick process. So at least there's something for reference. Public comment, this is the time of night where we accept comment from the public, as long as it's not about specific properties, projects or applications. There's nobody here tonight, so we'll move on. Approval of minutes, I know Ms. Mooney sent over some edits, I did not get a chance to read those edits or anything. So I would, I recommend that we table the, the two sets of minutes and get to them at our next meeting. Unless there's a. We'll table those. Select board staff, board member updates, Ms. Davies.
I have nothing.
Miss McKinnon.
Uh, nope, nothing, I did see the, sounds like the deliberative session went well, congratulations, by the way.
So I did attend, yeah, deliberative session, it was very well run, I think there was probably a hundred-ish people in attendance, so it's similar to a town meeting. Except it was over by eleven thirty, which was amazing, started at nine, so. Very well run, congrats to Don Fernald, our new moderator, I think it was our first deliberative session, she did a great job. Everybody was, was fairly respectful. Thank you to our, our emergency personnel, that we had the fire chief and, and a number of the fire department there, the police chief and a number of the, the police department there. The road agent was there, interim town administrator, select board, budget committee, so thank you to all of them for being there. As an aside, I did amend, recommend amending the overall town budget to include sixty-five hundred dollars for membership with our regional planning commission. I did that, I spoke as, towards it from the board side, but I did the amendment as, as a, as a town member. And that did get approved, so if now it's on the budget, or now it's on, obviously on the, will be on the ballot, is the town budget. So if the town budget is approved at, at town meeting, then we'll have that money. If it's.
Where's it coming from?
The, the.
Where are you asking it to come from?
It'll, it'll be part of the, it'll be part of the overall town budget.
We had put it on there, we, we had had that line item and then it got struck as one of, well, I think it's been on there for multiple years.
Sixty-five dollars.
Sixty-five hundred dollars total. So the way that, and the way that fee is calculated by the regional planning commission, it's by population size, so. Again, made the point that we utilize the services, we benefit from it. And we're one of two towns within straf region planning that doesn't parrot us and the only other one is a town of seven hundred people. So it kind of feels like a fairness kind of thing for me. So again, we'll see what happens, but again, just a lot of thanks to our town, the way everybody conducts themselves. It's amazing, the, the care and commitment that everybody puts into this.
Yeah, I was surprised.
School deliberative was tonight, so we'll know the outcome of that for sure on, online by the time we leave here.
I, I was surprised, I think, like you said, I was surprised to see the, see the summary of it.
Yeah.
How we kind of scooted through like, what, ten plus warrant articles with really no discussion.
Yeah, and I, I was not allowed to speak, originally they thought I was going to be able to speak towards the, the four warrant articles that we put forward with the zoning changes. But that was not allowed, it started right off with the budget and then moved on from there.
Because they can't be amended, right, the, the language can't be amended on them.
And that was one thing that was confusing to some at the meeting was the deliberative session. Some items can be amended, like the budget, you can add things in, change it. But other warrant articles, you can amend some of the language, but you're not vote, you're not changing, you're not voting on it that day. So you can have all the discussion you want, but in the end, it's on the ballot, so all you can do is amend it, so that came up on mostly the tax cap item. The date was wrong on the warrant article, it was the twenty twenty-three, it should have been twenty twenty-two. Discussion began about the tax cap, but had zero place in that deliberative session because you can't, can't change it. So, again, town, we'll see what happens in March. I'm sorry, did you have any?
Besides Deerfield, I'm good.
So obviously I'm here for this meeting, but the next meeting I will not be, I'm on vacation. At this time, Autumn, Scott from our office will be attending the meeting on my behalf. So we've been prepping for that, but it doesn't look like we're going to have any applications, but we might have like a board discussion. At this point in time, is that right? So you're in good hands, you would have been in good hands either way, because I don't leave until next Friday, so I would have made sure that any application was properly reviewed and staff report sent. But at this point in time, it doesn't look like there's going to be an application, but there might be more discussion.
Yeah, have them check in the day of or whatever, just to make sure that, so I'm not going to be here that night either, two twenty-two.
This, I'm currently scheduled to be at a work meeting, I was, that was my next thing, so, well, I was, my next question was going to be board. What would the board discussion be, kind of just continuation of items?
Well, it would be, it would be this, if you decided to do something like this, but it would also be if an applicant or like a resident, somebody wanted to submit something.
So legally, legally though, we don't have to hold the meeting because we've had a meeting.
Right, that's what I was just going to suggest.
We've held a meeting and we.
Yeah, for the month.
We have to have at least one meeting, I believe.
Would someone like to make a motion that we cancel the February twenty-second meeting?
I'll make a motion that we. Technically cancel, right? That we cancel the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three meeting that was presently scheduled for seven PM on that night.
I'll second that.
So it's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Mr. Davies, any further discussion on that? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, easy to count tonight, four zero.
So would we just want to probably maybe put a note?
It'll be posted in.
On announcements or something?
Alana will probably email the whole board saying that the meeting's been canceled.
Perfect.
Thanks, Alana. All right, that wraps up our agenda, I appreciate everybody coming in tonight, I'm glad we did, so now we don't have to have a second meeting, we don't cancel those lightly, but.
I think it's the first time I've been here that we actually canceled a meeting.
Makes sense, so.
That's a good point, yeah.
Exactly.
I'm currently scheduled to have three different nights of zoning and planning board meetings that week.
So I.
All right, so Monday would have been the holiday, which is when we usually, the last day for taking.
We're listed as the twenty-first this time.
Discussion.
So we are adjourned formally, it is eight o'clock on the dot. Before everybody leaves, please sign the plans in the miles ours and thank you again, everybody, appreciate it.